Mr. DeVoe? Not present yet. Mr. Giovanni? Not present yet. Mr. Giaramello?
Present.
Present. Mr. O'Brien? I know I just saw you. There he is. I think you're on mute, Mr. O'Brien. You?
Present.
Thank you. And Mr. McKenna? Mr. McKenna, you're on mute. He is present. He was in. I can see him there. Okay. Mr. McKenna, you still with us? He's on mute. I will, uh... I will begin. First public hearing is the, um... Public hearing regarding, uh, a zoning amendment on kennels. Are there any proponents? Hearing none. I will, I will explain. First of all, this was submitted, prepared by the city council. A current zoning ordinance regarding kennels requires the kennels be set back at least 250 feet from a residential district in a residential use. Uh, the city council is amending that to stipulate that if there is a highway, if the uses are separated by a highway, that will be in compliance. It would not be a violation of this section if a highway separates a kennel in a residential use. And that's it. Are there any opponents? Hearing none, seeing none, close that part of the hearing. Any questions from the planning board? Hearing none, seeing none, I will close the hearing. Second hearing is a zoning map amendment to change the zoning of 398 Squire Road from residential B to red, to general business. Are there any proponents?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Attorney Larry Simeoni. I represent Squire Road Realty LLC, Darren Maggio, manager, who seeks a zoning map change in accordance with 1712, Section 10 through 30. Specifically, the property is, is, uh, Lot A, 398 Squire Road. As, as you can see from the, uh, proposal, uh, is our, and our, our request is to... This lot is presently, um, a split lot. It has a two-family home on it, as well as a large garage built approximately 1989. The garage is on the general business district portion of the, the particular lot, the split lot. It also tightens upon the principal building at the rear deck. The two-family is located in the general business district. And at this point, we, um... A few years back, my clients had wanted a third unit. They thought they had the right to do that because of the general business district and they could build it over the garage, but instead chose to build it in the basement. It was determined that that was inappropriate. They removed that at the request of the city. At this time, I've been talking with the ward councilman to see if we could meet some kind of an accommodation. Our proposal is to make that small portion now of the GB, of the RB district GB so that the entire lot is general business. That would allow for uniform zoning and, um, at the same time allow for the restoration of a basement apartment in this particular property. While at the same time, um, having attained that relatively, you know, small goal, we would be offering in safeguards to protect, uh, any further uses on the premises in the future, such as a deed restriction or covenants, which would limit the property to the three family and at the same time provide no future general commercial use on that property. So I'd ask the, uh, planning board to note that I've worked with the, with the city council, with the ward councilor, and I'm hoping to receive your support for this zoning change.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mrs. Louis Charloni, do you have me marked present?
No.
I, I'm at the hea-, I've listened to the hearing and I'm, I'm present now for the board meeting. Thank you.
And this is Ed DeVoe. I'm, I'm here also. I'm sorry if I was a little late.
I'm on the phone, so I don't, I'm not in the, there's no picture of me. Lucky you.
Thank God.
We're having a problem with our, uh, our chairman. He, he can't unmute himself. So he can see everything, but he can't. So I'm, I'm running the meeting for him.
I think it's star six.
I don't know if Ashley or Ruben can fix that for him, but, uh...
Oh, God.
I just asked him to unmute.
I did. I got him on the phone. I told him unmute. He's on his phone.
Oh, you know what? There's a thing you have to press. I'll find it. Hold on.
Okay.
I think it's star six. I think of Gene's... That's how I unmuted myself. Star six.
Sorry, who are we trying, who are we trying to unmute?
Gene, Eugene McKenna.
Louis is right. It's star six.
Okay, hopefully he can hear us and press that.
What, what, what phone number is, is he ever, is he called in or is he? Do we know his phone number?
He's unmuted. You there, Gene? Gene, can you hear us?
He's, he's listed as Gene McKenna.
I see Eugene.
Frank, have you got me? This is Frank.
Yes.
This is John D. Simone. Have you got me present?
I do now. Okay.
Sorry for being a little late.
I can see Gene is, it looks like he's unmuted.
Make, make sure he put, he has to, he has to punch in his phone star six.
Dr. and I had a go.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Uh, he's in the process of going back to his phone and pressing star six. So let's, let's proceed, uh... Uh, are there any other proponents? Hearing none, seeing none, and close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Hearing none and seeing none, I close that side of the hearing. Now, questions from the planning board?
This is dead, and I, and I apologize, Attorney Simeoni, for, for being a little late in this and I didn't hear the earlier part of this. You know, so this person is trying to go from a residential business to a general business? Is that it? Is that what I understand?
The particular lot, Mr. DeVoe, is a split lot. Um, if you looked at Exhibit, uh, Exhibit 1, um, approximately half of the lot is general business while the remaining part is residential. And the garage sits principally on the general business district and kind of touches the principal structure, the two-family. These structures were built in 1989. And because the garage sits in a GB district, there was a, a time where they believed that they had a right to a third, a third unit, and they probably were advised as such, but instead of building the third unit, uh, above the garage and, uh, maybe attaching that principal structure to the, which, to the, to family, they, um, put a, an apartment in the basement. That apartment was determined to be inappropriate and they removed that apartment. And now, in, in speaking with the ward councilman, I was trying to accomplish a very small goal, which is to restore that third, you know, third basement apartment, while at the same time offering safeguards to the neighborhood and to abutters by assigning a deed restriction that it can't be more than three, uh, family and a deed restriction or a covenant that would prevent any future commercial use, uh, of the property. And so that was the goal and discussion I've had with the ward councilman. Essentially, we think it will provide uniform zoning and it'll provide a modest increase in density that we believe could be done anyway, but probably in a much nicer manner. And that's why we're making the request.
So, so do I understand that, do, do I understand that they need to get the general business designation in order to get the basement apartment restored?
I think what we do is we, we're asking you to make the entire lot general business, which will then...
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Sorry. So say that again.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. So anyway, the, my view of the world here is if you looked in the 1981 map, it, it looks like most of this lot was supposed to be general business. And the other issue is you, I think you can build a single fam-, uh, uh, an apartment, uh, over the garage because it's general business, if, you know. So it, can the three family be built? Yes, but it's like, you know, it, it's cumbersome. It's not as nice and neat as having a, a basement apartment that they've had there already. There's more than adequate off-street parking. And the other aspect of it is this piece of property, um, will no longer be on, available for commercial use. And this one particular use will be the only use allowed on the property.
Okay, so, so in, in understanding that it can't be used for commercial use, but yet they want a general business designation, I'm a little confused there.
Because you have to, I guess you have to, you have to make it completely general business in order to clear the way for the apartment to be put in the basement rather than above the garage or whatever. Once you clear that way by making a uniform lot, because the two-family, um, principally sits in the RB district, if you can look at the map, although some of it, the, the rear deck of the two-family is, uh, stairs is, is in the GB district. So you clear it up by making it, um, clearing up, by making it GB, allowing for the applicant to move for a basement apartment, which is less intrusive, less expensive, uh, and so forth. And in that, in return, the, uh, covenants with the city, uh, to not use that property for a commercial use other than a three-family and no greater than a three-family.
So this restricts the owner to the point of restoring the basement apartment, still has a garage, he's not going to build over the garage, and there will never be a business there?
That is correct, sir.
And, and the abutters are all on board with this?
So I've worked with the ward councilman only.
The ward councilman is, forgive me, I forgot what ward this is.
This is Ward 6.
Okay, so, all right. And, and the ward councilman has had conversations with the abutters and, and the residents?
I'm not so sure what the ward councilman has done.
Okay, and he's not here tonight?
The meeting's been advertised through the chair, may I, Gene?
Go ahead. Yeah?
Well, this meeting's been advertised properly, so anybody who wanted to come in and, and, and weigh in far against the project is welcome to do so. I have only one pertinent question. Frank, what do you think? Could I have your opinion on this, please?
Yes, well, see, seeing that the property has always been, uh, a three-family, but because it's owned RB, there was, there was no legal mechanism to legally convert that third apartment. With the deed restriction on it, I don't see any change in the historical use of the property. And it protects the neighborhood from any encroachment of businesses, uh, in that area of Squire Road. So I don't see, I don't see any issue with it.
And, 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 excuse me, I still have, I'm almost done. And, and, and Councilor Simeoni, you said that there's, uh, there's adequate off-street parking, there's six parking spaces off-street for three, for three homes?
I've seen a plan.
Do we need three or, would we need six or five?
I believe you'll need six. Six.
Six, right?
Right.
And you said there's adequate off-street parking?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good enough for me. Thank you. I, no more questions.
Massive question. So Council, you've been referring to a map to look at?
Yeah, Exhibit 1.
Yeah, I, I don't, I've not seen it. So I'm looking at the property on Google Maps on Street View, and I see the garage and I see a dwelling. But 398 Squire Road actually comes up that it's on Marshall Street, it looks like. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right property.
I thought, I thought it was on Stevens Street.
The corner of Stevens Street.
Yeah, so.
I thought it was on Stevens Street.
There's a 145 Stevens Street? Cause, uh, the property on Google Maps shows 145 Stevens Street. So is it just marked on Stevens Street, but it's actually 398, uh, Squire Road here?
398 Squire Road in the assessors' records, and, uh, I believe they do use 145 Stevens Street once in a while, although I, when I looked at the records of the city, I couldn't find any building department records for 145, I only found them for 398.
Okay, thank you.
Larry, can I ask Larry a question, please?
Is there any more questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Delvecchio.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Larry, so you're saying if they get a proof of this, there'll be no future building there, just whatever they have on that existing lot?
That's correct.
So even though you, even though you're changing the, will change your use, you're not gonna, five years from now, say we want to put an apartment building there?
That is absolutely correct.
All right, I'm fine.
When was the property purchased, uh, Council?
These people have owned it for years. We're going back to the 1980s. They actually, Mr. Maggio used to own Maggio's Restaurant, which was right down the street. And his family lived in Revere and, and they had their restaurant in Revere. It was two-family. I, I show as being built in 1989.
Thank you, Council.
Are there any, are there any more questions?
Counselor Serino has just been promoted to a panelist. He just logged in.
Welcome.
Okay.
Hi, guys. Mr. Chairman, are you, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Council.
Thank you. I, I was watching, I was tuning in. The, the beauty of Zoom is that I was tuning in and I heard, uh, this come up, so I figured I would jump on. So to Mr. DeVoe's question, I have not spoken with any of the abutters. However, as Attorney Simeoni has said, uh, we're, we're basically, all we're doing is changing, we're changing the zoning, but it really, it has been a three-family. So the way I'm looking at it is we're just giving him relief to put that basement apartment back. And that's why I advocated for the deed restrictions. I'm the one who asked that no more than a three-family go there, because I'm petrified to the, you know, five or 10 years down the road, Mr. Maggio could sell, could become an apartment building, it could become a hotel. I mean, it's, it's a small lot, but in this city, you never know. So that's why I wanted to make sure, um, the deed restrictions were in place. So really, I, I mean, it's changing on paper, but it's going to remain what it always has been. It's going to be that three-family, and it's going to allow him to put that basement apartment back. And as the attorney said, uh, there's enough off-street parking. It's, it's more of a paperwork thing, the way I view it, than anything else. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And if anybody else has any questions, thank you.
I, I have one question.
Thank you for your input. Go ahead.
Through the chair, Counselor Serino, so you're comfortable with this proposal?
As long as, uh, we work out in, in city council subcommittee the deed restrictions and the covenant to prevent it from becoming anything more than a three-family and to further prevent a, um, a, a, a business commercial use. Because as I said last night at the council meeting, if you look, and actually, um, uh, Mr. Harmilo had just referred to it, that it's, it's, it's technically on Marshall Street, even though it's, it's Squire Road. And it becomes, that's where it becomes the more residential part of Squire Road. And I do not want to, um, push business further into the neighborhood. So that's why I, I asked for those deed restrictions. So, uh, Mr. Charloni, I would be in support only if we do get those deed restrictions, which I, I believe we are, and, uh, at, at the subcommittee level. We'll handle that, but I want to make sure Stevens Street is protected.
And one last question, one last question for the chair, please. And, and can you confirm, uh, Counselor Sime- Simeoni has attested to the fact that there's enough off-street parking, six parking spaces off-street? And you're, you're, I know you've looked at that, that spot, so you can confirm that?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Charlie, I can confirm that, because if, if you look at the parcel 2, it's, um, you know, it swings around, so it's on, it's on the corner of Stevens and...
Once you tell me you can confirm it, that's good enough for me.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, uh, and, and this is Ed, and again, through the chairman to you, uh, Counselor Serino, and, and Attorney Simeoni as well. Just to understand, because I mean, my biggest concern has always been people changing from RB to GB and, and encroachment upon residential areas with businesses. And, and so what I'm, I think I've heard, and I want clarification on this, is that it is true that there will be no business development on this property, given these restrictions. And, and Serino, Counselor Serino, I think you, you said that if that happens, but it hasn't happened, and, and that, that's a little concerning. I'm, I'm trying to understand that part.
So I think...
If I could answer the question, uh, uh, Mr. DeVoe, our, our proposal will be to present to the council at subcommittee a draft of the restriction and make sure that anybody who, well, not anybody, but make sure that the subcommittee is satisfied with the safeguards established by that deed restriction or covenant.
Okay.
And so if that, if they are satisfied, I'm, I'm sure that they will move forward, um, with the approval of the ward council. If they're not, then I've got a little bit more work to do.
And if I may, through the chair, Frank, you're gonna write, you're gonna, you're gonna help us frame this motion, so the motion itself is going to have the covenants and restrictions in the motion that we're gonna make, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's gonna cover everything, Ed.
Yep, yep, no, thank you, Louis. Nope, that, that's exactly what I wanted to make sure of.
Mr. Chairman, through, Mr. Chairman, through you to, to Mr. DeVoe. See, I'm not, I'm not too sure of the, the full process. It came before the council last night for a public hearing, and now it's going to subcommittee, but I know it's before you guys, before we have the final, um, say. So I, but I, I can tell you that if, you know, I'm confident that we will get those, um, restrictions in subcommittee, but if, if for some reason it did not come out of subcommittee with those restrictions, I certainly would not be supportive. But I am supportive, as long as we get those, that's, it's, my support is contingent on those, that it not become anything more than a three-family and not become a, a business down the line.
And, and, and again, through, through the chairman to, to you, Counselor Serino, I, and just to understand, it was before the city council last night. Was anybody opposed to this?
No, there was nobody in opposition to this.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any more opponents? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the hearings and we will go into our regular meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members. And congratulations to the two new members. I had the privilege of serving on the planning board in Revere, and I hope you have, uh, as an exciting career as I did, I, I really had a good time serving the public. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, guys. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, the first, uh, the first agenda item on the regular meeting is a, a vote on a recommendation to the city council with respect to the proposed zoning ordinance amendment relative to kennels. For those who were not here when the, uh, the hearing was held, there were no opponents, no, the proponent, no proponents, no opponents. This was presented and fashioned by the city council and submitted by the city council as a whole. And what it does is, uh, allows kennels to exist between residential uses if there's a highway separating them. Now kennels are only allowed in the highway business district and TED district, which is like an industrial district. So there aren't too many locations which are separated from those districts that are residential areas. The only one that comes to mind is the VFW Parkway. We have a residential area across the street on Camp, on Kimball, where Beach Sales is. So that, that is it in a nutshell. I don't see it as a major impact at all, and, uh, I see it beneficial to the city. Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Delvecchio, seconded by Mr. Amico. Need a roll call? On a roll call, Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Charloni?
Yes.
Mr. Delvecchio?
Yes.
Mr. Desimone?
Yes.
Mr. DeVoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ju-, Mr. Giovanni is absent. Mrs. Giaramello?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
It's voted, so ordered, a recommendation will go to the city council. Regarding item number two. Item number two is a vote on a recommendation to the city council with respect to a proposed zoning map amendment to change zoning of 398 Squire Road from residential to general business.
Could I, I, I'll make a motion on that, but Frank, could, should we, how does the amendment work on the restrictions?
Well, it'll be a vote, a motion to recommend to the city council, subject to a deed restriction being placed on the property, that nothing more than a three-family ever can be developed on that property.
And it can't be commercial, right?
That's correct. Nothing more than a three-family. And it would be, the, the restriction, the deed restriction could, would be reviewed by the city solicitor as well.
Okay, Frank, you, you write, you, you put that amendment in and I'll make the motion, okay?
I'll second the motion.
Does anybody second it?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Charloni, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. On a roll call. Uh, Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Charloni?
Yes.
Mr. Delvecchio?
Yes.
Mr. Desimone?
Yes.
Mr. DeVoe?
I, I, I'm sorry, but I have one question. When you said subject to the city solicitor, and, and I need to ask, forgive me, I need to ask the question. If he says no, what happens here?
I, I, I don't see the city solicitor saying no. He's just gonna review it to, to its legal form.
All right, all right, as long as we're, I'm, I'm just always concerned about businesses encroaching on residential areas, so I'll go along with a yes.
DeVoe is a yes. Mr. Giovanni is absent. Mr. Giaramello?
Yes.
Miss, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. McKenna? Yeah. That's voted, it's so ordered. Uh, there is no other further business before the board.
One moment, one moment. Mr. Chairman, have we voted on the minutes of the previous meeting? Do we have to do that?
I think we already voted the last meeting. I don't see anything on the agenda.
Okay, this was asked, just a housekeeping matter. No problem. Frank, if we don't need to do it, we don't have to do it.
You're just so talented.
No, 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 I don't want to miss that, and then people are gonna run up to the hall and sign stuff, you know?
And, and before we adjourn, I, I just wanted to say welcome, and I think it's James, James O'Brien and Juan Hanamiel. Welcome to, to the planning board.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Nice to see you.
Guys, if you have any questions, you can contact me at City Hall. Frank Strangini, the city planner. If you have any questions at all on the role of the planning board, uh, bylaws, uh, we are, we are responsible, the subdivision control law in the city, which means anybody who wants to subdivide their land, it has to come before the planning board. Also, any zoning amendments that are submitted before the city council, the planning board has to hold a public hearing. We are advisory to the city council, and we make our recommendations to the city council. So we hold a separate public hearing to the city council, and we have to submit our recommendations. So we hold a separate public hearing to the City Council, and we have to submit our recommendation within 21 days. The City Council cannot vote on the amendment until they receive our recommendation.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
To adjourn.
Before we go, gentlemen, thank you for your participation, and I wish everybody and your families a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
And a safe...
Don't forget to open a bottle of champagne on January 20th. Everyone have a good evening.
I already did that.
All right. Good to see everybody. Good to hear everybody.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
Be safe.
Good night.
All right, good night. Thank you, Ashley.